Good evening. The Monday, March 14, 2016 Common Council Meeting is now in session. Our invocation is by Rabbi Karen Compan... Companess, I'm sorry. From Temple Beth El. Thank you.
As we gather together here this evening to conduct the business of the great city of South Bend, let us rededicate ourselves to work together in unity and harmony to improve this particular region of Indiana that we all call home with the individual gifts that each of us brings to this worthy endeavor. Let us pledge to join hands to ensure that the city of South Bend is able to realize the abundant potential with which it is blessed. The world may smile at our dreams, no matter, we still believe. We believe in tomorrow. We believe that we have the power to make tomorrow different from today. We believe that poverty need not be permanent, that alienation need not be forever, that people need not be perpetually at war. We believe in humanity despite all that we know about ourselves. We believe that there can yet be a time of justice and a time of virtue and a time of fellowship and a time of sharing and a time of tranquility for all who live on earth. We believe in tomorrow, for God has guided us in how to live today. Aware of the great gift of life which is granted to each of us, let us use it for blessing as we seek to ensure that all God's creatures are treated with respect and dignity. Together, let us work to improve this part of planet Earth that has been granted to us to protect, to develop, and to nurture. In Judaism, we say the following words when we are in need of strength to carry on with our holy tasks. I think it is appropriate to invoke these words here at this time in this place. Chazak, chazak, venit hazek. Let's be strong and even stronger, and together let us strengthen one another. May God grant strength to all of us. May God bless us all with peace, and if you'd like to join me, let us all say together, amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Plenipotentiary, please. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Fowler, roll call, please.
President Scott.
President.
Councilmember Preston.
Here.
Randy Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Broden.
Here.
Dr. Varner.
Vice President Davis.
I'm here.
Mr. Boardy.
Present.
Mr. Furlet.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Present.
Eighth present.
Thank you. Report from Subcommittee on Amendments, please.
To the South Bend Common Council of the City of South Bend, the Subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the February 22, 2016, meeting of the Council and found them to be correct. Therefore, we approve, we recommend the same be approved. Recommend that we accept the report from the Subcommittee on Amendments.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
Under special business, I'd like to make a motion to move the regularly scheduled meeting on March 28 to March 29.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Ms. Fowler, I think I have two nays.
Ms. Fowler, roll call.
Yes. Yes.
Councilmember Preston.
Nay.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Nay.
Mr. Boardy.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
House Member White.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Okay, thank you. One more, just bit of information. Tonight, under privileged floor, since the Clean Air Bill is on this agenda, it cannot be discussed tonight. So I just want everybody to know that there are no comments to be made on anything that's on the agenda. That includes the Clean Air Act. So if you're thinking of that, I just want to make sure everybody was clear with that so there's no false expectations. Also, if you're here for Bill 0516, Ordinance Approving Fees for Nuisance Abatement, and 016, 0616, fees, approving fees for securing and demolishing structures, both those are continued. And 1623 as well regarding the Coke-pollard fence. So those three. So fees regarding nuisance abatement and also for demolition. So I just want everybody to be clear before we move on, and I don't want to waste anybody's time. So with that, we'll move on to 1624.
1624. A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, publicly commemorating and remembering the life of Skyler Kofax, constitutional reformer and 17th Vice President of the United States.
Good evening. I'm Oliver Davis, 1801 Nash Street, South Bend, Indiana. Again, it's an honor to come before the Council to discuss one of our heroes and great citizens who lived here in the city of South Bend. And this month, on March 23, will be his 190th birthday. Whereas the South Bend Common Council notes that the city cemetery, founded in 1832, the city of South Bend is the home of approximately 14,800 final renting places on its 21.36 acres, including South Bend resident Skyler Kofax, who was the 17th Vice President of the United States and a constitutional reformer. And whereas the Common Council notes that in 2009, the Historic Preservation Committee of South Bend and St. Joe County partnered with the Skyler Kofax chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution, DAR, to collaborate together and promote the preservation of the city cemetery with this mission to preserve, protect, and share carefully and treat reverently this hollow and historic site. Since that date, the South Bend Parks Foundation in collaboration with the Common Council and the city administration have worked together to support the city cemetery restoration project and the city cemetery master plan in 2015. And whereas on January 14, 2013, the Common Council unanimously adopted Resolution Number 4226-13, which declared March 23 of each year as Skyler Kofax day in South Bend, Indiana, to recognize the public service career of Skyler Kofax, who served as Speaker of the House of Representatives from 1863 to 1869, served as our country as the 17th Vice President of the United States from 1869 to 1873 under President Ulysses S. Grant, and recalled his dedication to civil rights and the passage of the 13th Amendment in 1865 to abolish slavery, the passage of the 14th Amendment in 1863, and addressing due process and equal protection in the 15th Amendment in 1869, addressing the right to vote regardless of one race, color, or previous condition of servitude. And whereas in May of 2015, as Skyler Kofax reenacted the city cemetery, dressed in period clothing, shared some of the rich history of his life by telling stories about serving as President Ulysses S. Grant's vice president during his first term, who's remembered as being a very dedicated public servant, and who was of good nature, kindly, cordial, and always diplomatic. He was still Vice President Abraham Lincoln on January 1, 1863, when he signed the Emancipation Proclamation, who became known as by the nickname Smiler Kofax, who came into this world four months after his father had passed away from heart palpitis and was forced to drop out of school at the age of 10 to work, to teach himself and to dedicate his life to serving others. Now therefore, be resolved by the Common Council of the City of South Bend, Indiana, as follows. Section 1. The Common Council hereby calls upon the citizens of South Bend to pause until it's elected for the contributions made not only by, not only to our city, but to our country by Skyler Kofax, who moved to South Bend in 1836 and called his home until his death in 1873. The Council recognizes that 193 years ago, on March 23, 1823, Skyler Kofax was born. And through his vision and dedication, America is a much better place who is remembed for his tireless work and leadership in championing the passage of the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendments. Section 3. This resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its adoption by the Council and approval by the mayor. On the 23rd of this month, the Daughters of the American Revolution, they always get together to have a little ceremony around the noon hour. And so I would be there to present to them this award from, this resolution from the Councils that we will continue to honor this great servant who lived in South Bend, who we drive him down Kofax. When I was in Denver this past summer, you see a whole big street named Kofax in Denver, Colorado, is the city's name after Kofax. And so it's just amazing how other cities have honored him. And the place where he's buried, sometimes we forget about him or just think of him as just a regular name. And it's something we need to, and we will continue to have, a better representation of his gravesite, which we will be working on, and to honor somebody who really came on a fire, I think, in his life and even the way he was portrayed, due to some of the actions and the issues that he took. But we're going through all this later in life as we look at that. But it's amazing to see that somebody who did all this came from South Bend, and so it was an honor. So I present this to you, Council, and I will present this to those at the meeting on the 23rd.
Thank you. At this time, Councilmembers, any comments?
Thank you. I appreciate bringing the history and life back to the attention each year of our citizens. Very important, and appreciate you taking the time to do that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Davis, for this. If you've seen the movie Lincoln, you'll see Skyler Kofax portrayed predominantly in that film, so that's how important a figure he was in American history. So thank you very much for doing this.
Terrific efforts preserving, protecting, and honoring community leaders, military service, and our rich history and our early citizenship. So thank you for bringing this forward and advancing this for our community. Appreciate it.
Mr. Boardy?
Yeah. Thank you for your efforts as clerk. I sat there through a couple of your meetings that focused the importance of preserving and enhancing the beauty of the city cemetery, and I'm glad that the administrations embraced that, and we're going to see a lot of improvements over there, and Skyler Kofax is part of that.
Thank you for your leadership on this initiative.
I would like to thank Councilmember Davis for each year of bringing forth a resolution that will keep us in remembrance of the great Vice President that we had in our community and the work that you've done to work with the Parks Administration to ensure that the city cemetery will reflect not only Skyler, but others who have been there as well. So we appreciate your work.
Thank you. And as you were here later on in the year, I'd like to continue to add, for all of our mayors or leaders have been married, um, buried, not married, I'm buried, we'd like to have some kind of remembrance on them that they have served in the city of South Bend by their gravesites. So I want to make sure that whether they were city council mayors or whatever, we need to honor those who have taken the time, some part in their life, to serve the city. I'd like to thank our city attorney for putting this together. Thank you.
Oliver, I'd like to thank you as well. Yeah, that's okay. I can get a word in eventually. You know, it's going back to when you and I served on Community Relations, and it just was fascinating to me to work with you on that in the very beginning, to bring to life cult, Skyler Kofax, and everything that you're doing with the city cemetery. So thank you so much. So would anybody from the public would like to come and speak in favor of 1624? Please come to the podium now. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1624? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, turn it back to Council.
Motion to adopt by acclamation.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Before we go to reports from city offices, I would also, I was remiss to introduce and recognize Trip 173, based out of Grace United Methodist Church in South Bend, is in the back of the room. So thank you, all young men. Please stand up. You'll see a slice of democratic process in work, so stay awake, please. At this time, the reports from city offices, we will not have a report from city offices. James Mueller from the administration is here representing. So with that, I'll entertain a motion for Committee of the Whole. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Okay, with the Council, I'll just remain in my seat. It's going to be a quick one.
The Committee of the Whole is now in session. I'd like to entertain a motion to continue Bill 516 and 616 to April 11.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion carries. I would like to entertain a motion to resolve from the Committee of the Whole.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Full Council is now back in session. With those continuations, we will not have further reading. We'll move to resolutions. Resolutions, this portion of the Common Council meetings where Common Council hears bills filed under proposed resolutions. The title of each proposed resolution is read by the clerk. A report from the committee chairperson of standing committee, which the bill is referred to advisory review and recommendation is then given. If the proposed resolution is requesting a zoning special exception, a report from the Building Department will be first given, followed by the petitioner, who gives a formal presentation at the podium. If the proposed resolution is requesting a tax abatement, a report from City Community Investment Department will be given, followed by the petitioner, giving the formal presentation at the podium. With all other proposed resolutions, formal presentations by petitioners will be given immediately after the committee chairperson report. Following the formal presentation, council members may ask preliminary questions only, and the council comments will be heard during the council portion. During the public portion, each proposed resolution, members of the public are invited to address the council. Please give your name and address and comments on each bill. If you have questions, they will be addressed by the presenter during the rebuttal. Each member of the public is limited to five minutes, with those speaking in favor going first, followed by the opposition, then a five-minute rebuttal by the presenter of the bill. So with that all said, clerk, would you please read 1613?
1613. A Resolution Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution, 4330-14, Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 237 North Michigan Street, South Bend, Indiana, 46601, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement for the LaSalle Apartments LLC.
Thank you. Is there a report from?
Yes, Community Investment sends us forward favorably.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Aaron.
Aaron Cobb, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. On March 10, 2014, a declaratory and subsequent confirming resolution were adopted for tax abatement consideration for the renovation of the LaSalle Hotel site. As a standard with all abatements brought before council, the original abatement, quote, "is limited to two calendar years from the date of adoption of the declaratory resolution" by the Common Council. The original petitioner that was granted this abatement was not able to fulfill their duties of the project, and on January 21, 2015, a reconfirming resolution was brought back to council to transfer that original abatement to a new developer, which was Real America, and that was granted. Due to the elapsed time between when that original abatement was approved and when the transfer was made, Real America was not, did not have two fully years to get the project completed, so they're requesting an extension of one year to get them through March of next year to complete the project. It is ongoing. The construction is progressing very well. It's projected to finish in September 2016, and we have a petitioner here to speak on the project.
Would the petitioner please make a brief statement? Name and address, please.
Hello, my name is Jeff Ryan, Real American Development, offices at 10711 America Way in Fishers. As he said, we came into this a little bit late after the tax abatement had been placed in place for a year, and we are moving forward as quickly as we can, and we'll be producing 67 market-rate apartments and some very nice commercial space in downtown South Bend that we very much look forward to having a great grand opening in September this year and inviting all of you to that to see how beautiful a building can be.
Great, thank you. Any questions from Council at this point for either petitioner or presenter? No? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Is there anybody from the public wishing to speak on Bill 1613? Please come to the podium now. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1613? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against 1613? Please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to Council.
Motion to send the full Council favorably?
No. Motion to either adopt or...
Oh, I'm sorry. We're in resolutions. Skip right over ordinances. Motion to adopt.
Second. Ms. Fowler?
So am I reading? 1614? Oh, okay. This is the research department. All right. Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Boardy.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
It would be appropriate at this time to entertain a motion to hear substitute bills 1614, 1615, 1616, and 1617, as appointed by the office of the city clerk, and also to hear each of those substitute bills together for purposes of public service.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. Aaron, go ahead.
Read.
I'm sorry. Jump the gun.
1614. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Hotel located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. Resolution 1615. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Retail property located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. 1616. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Retail property located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. 1617. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating a Certain Area Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Parking garage located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. 1618. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Apartments located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. 1619. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Apartments located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. 1620. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Retail property located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. 1621. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating a Certain Area Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Parking garage located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC. 1622. A Resolution Modifying and Confirming the Adoption of a Declaratory Resolution Designating Certain Areas Within the City of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as 211 West Washington Street, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a 10-year real property tax abatement. Apartments located at The Tower at Washington Square LLC.
Is there a committee report?
Yes. Community Investment sends all forward, all four forward favorably.
Thank you. Now, Aaron.
Aaron Cobb, Department of Community Investment, 14th floor of this building. These confirming resolutions are a follow-up to the unanimous vote that was made on the declaratory resolutions last fall. The project will have an estimated private investment of $30 million. That will create a mixed-use project consisting of a new hotel, residential units, residential apartment units, retail space, and a refurbished parking garage, which will include parking for public use. The project is scheduled to create at least 83 jobs over the next 10 years. Estimated taxes being abated over that 10-year period are just over $3.7 million. Estimated taxes being paid over that same period are just over $2 million. And again, representatives of the project are here to speak on the project.
Petitioner, please give a brief statement.
Thank you, President Scott. Mark Neal of Bradley Company, offices at 112 West Jefferson Boulevard, Suite 300 here in South Bend, Indiana. Excited to give you an update on the project of the Aloft Hotel, The Tower of Washington Square. As Aaron noted, it's a mixed-use redevelopment. Estimated cost are in excess $30 million for the redevelopment in addition to the building purchase. Currently, there are plans for 183 hotel rooms, 86 apartments, as well as over 15,000 square feet of retail space in the ground floor and the basement, and the parking garage is a sizable space for about 220 parking spaces. The work is continuing since the original declaratory resolutions were passed in October. The asbestos abatement has been completed. Work on the parking garage continues. It should be completed next month. There's been, obviously, a complete demolition that's been going on since October, taking it down to steel and concrete on the inside. Everything inside will be replaced, all HVAC systems, plumbing, electrical, and as well as a significant refurbishment of all the elevators, as well as some new elevators in the building. And we're very excited about the project. Work continues and would ask for your favorable consideration of these confirming resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any questions for 14, 15, 16, or 17? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of 1614, 1615, 1616, or 1617? Please come to the podium. Name and address, sir.
I'm in the 70 round, I live at 222 East Nebraska Street in the city of South Bend. Also, for Washington Group, I'm citizen, I'm for better government. I'm in favor of this. Only question I have is this. On that property site, there's real dead gas leak, and I don't know was that from the residue or a gas leak, but in that building, I want to know if they ever find that gas leak and get it taken care of. Because I know well, I've been 22 and 1/2 years in this building. We had a lot of problems going on to that particular building. Beautiful building, need a lot of work done on it. I think it's going to be a bigger factor in South Bend, but I really feel they need to check and make sure wherever that gas residue was coming from, and it was mostly from the main bathroom area downstairs and lower part of that building. I want to know if they get that taken care of. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing none, we'll turn it back to Council.
Question.
Oh, rebuttal, I'm sorry. Mr. Neal, would you like to address the gas situation?
So I can't answer the question fully in terms of what work has been done on the gas lines in the basement. I can't say, I know that they are, the infrastructure there is all being replaced. I will be sure to provide a full update on any work that's been done or is planned regarding the gas lines. Certainly a concern that, I know Mr. Brown, as he noted, a long time with NIPSCO, and we will certainly get it addressed.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Now we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt sixteen fourteen. Substitute version?
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Aye.
Vice President Bernard, I mean Vice President Davis.
Aye.
My apologies. Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
President Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Entertained a motion on sub sixteen fifteen.
Or motion to adopt substitute version sixteen fifteen.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Vice President Oliver Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Motion to adopt substitute sixteen sixteen.
Vice President Davis.
Second.
Thank you.
Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
And I say aye. And Vice President Oliver Davis.
Yes, I'm sorry, my list is a little screwy here. I think it's because Barnes is gone, okay.
Motion to.
It is, it's out of.
You don't want him leaving yet.
Motion to adopt substitute sixteen seventeen.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Alright, let's try this again. Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Vorty is an aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. We'll reset. Sixteen eighteen, please.
Sixteen eighteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as two fifteen Sycamore Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one seven, an economic revitalization area for purposes of an eight-year real property tax abatement for East Bank, South, East Bank, South Bend Development LLC.
Is there a committee report?
Yes, Community Investments sends us forward favorably.
Thank you. Presenter.
Again, Aircom Department of Community Investment, fourteenth floor of this building. The petitioner is requesting an eight-year real property tax abatement for a project to be located at two fifteen Sycamore Street in the East Bank. The petitioner plans for an estimated two point five million dollar private investment on a six-story mixed-use project consisting of a ground floor, a commercial space, and then residential, twelve residential units on the floors above. The project will create two new net jobs and retain fourteen jobs. Estimated taxes being abated over the eight years is just over two hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. Estimated taxes being paid over that same period is just over three hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And again, the petitioner is here to give an overview of the project.
Petitioner, come up, state your name and address, and give us a very brief statement.
Good evening. My name is Belva Canada, one two one South Niles Avenue, and the designer for Matthews LLC. We're looking at a project that is between La Salle and Colfax on Sycamore. It's a five-story building with the rooftop terrace being the sixth story. There are twelve apartment buildings. This is going to be a start for us in starting new apartment buildings in downtown South Bend. So we're trying it out. Each floor has a one-story, I mean, sorry, a one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom floor plan. So we're going to use this to find out what people want and see how viable the market is for apartments. That way, as we move on to River Race, we can figure out a better compilation of one-bedrooms, two-bedrooms, and three-bedrooms. So, but as this being our first project with apartments, it's about a two point five million dollar project, so we would seek your favorable motion on this so that we could begin. Design is very close to completion, and hopefully with weather permitting, we can begin soon. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Council members, are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of sixteen eighteen, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against sixteen eighteen, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt sixteen eighteen. Second. Ms. Fowler.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Sixteen nineteen, please.
Sixteen nineteen, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as twelve sixty-five Franklin, Catalyst Two Building, admission park, South Bend, four six six oh one, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for Spectrum R M R C LLC.
Thank you. Committee report.
Community Investments sends us forward favorably.
Thank you. Presenter.
Good evening, council members. Jacob Alexander, Community Investment, fourteenth floor. Spectrum is requesting a five-year personal property tax abatement for the purchase of approximately two point seven million in new pharmaceutical equipment. The new equipment would create thirty-nine permanent full-time jobs within the five-year abatement period with an average annual salary of fifty thousand dollars. Estimated tax, total tax on the new equipment over the five-year period is two hundred thirty-eight thousand four hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Estimated taxes abated during the five-year abatement period, one hundred nine thousand three hundred and fifteen dollars. And total taxes to be paid on the new and existing equipment over the five-year abatement period is one hundred twenty-nine thousand one hundred seventy-two, one hundred seventy-two dollars. At this time, I have the petitioner and company president, Gregory, aye, available for any petition or questions.
Okay. Petitioner, would you please come state your name and address and give us a very brief?
My name is Greg Hyatt. Address is one seven four nine O, Doug Dale Drive in South Bend. And specifically, it's a radio pharmacy and a manufacturing facility. We have both the Nuclear Regulatory Commission and the FDA involvement in this equipment. It allows us to produce different types of materials than we've been producing for the last twenty years, and it's a new paradigm in our particular business. I didn't mention that earlier, but it's a fun word to say, so. So, you know, we're hoping that, you know, we get this favorable so we can move forward. We've been working on this for quite a while.
Thank you. Council members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of sixteen nineteen, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against sixteen nineteen, please come to the podium. Seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt sixteen nineteen. Second. Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you. Thank you. Sixteen twenty, please.
Sixteen twenty, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as Blackthorn Corporate Office, Parking Lot Six, South Bend, two, four, six six two eight, an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for Con and Con Investments LLC.
Thank you. Committee report.
Community Investments sends us forward favorably.
Presenter.
Good evening, council members. My name is Sarah Heinzman. I am on the fourteenth floor of this building, Community Investments. The petitioner is asking for a five-year property abatement. Total taxes with the abatement are going to be two hundred and thirty-one thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. Of that, dividend taxes will be a hundred and three, and the estimated payment will be a hundred and twenty-eight. This is going to retain twenty-three jobs in our community, and it's going to create five new jobs with an hourly average wage of nineteen fifty. And Rich Deal is here to speak on behalf of the petitioner.
Great. Petitioner, please name an address and a brief statement.
Thank you. Good evening, President Scott, members of the full council. My name is Rich Deal from Barnes &amp; Thornburg with offices at one hundred North Michigan Street here in South Bend. Pleased to seek your support of this designating resolution that relates, as Sarah mentioned, to an investment by Con &amp; Con Investments of a little over one point six million dollars to construct a commercial distribution building in the Blackthorn Park. This is designed to serve the office headquarters and distribution needs of UniFirst, which is a successor to Zyker with respect to its kind of uniform delivery and aspect of their business. This will result in at least five new jobs with payroll of over a hundred and eighty thousand and allow them to retain at least their twenty-three existing employees in this division with payroll right under a million dollars. So we seek your support and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, council members. Any questions? Okay. Open up to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of sixteen twenty, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against sixteen twenty, please come to the podium. Seeing, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion to adopt sixteen twenty.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you.
Motion to hear sixteen twenty-one and sixteen twenty-two together for purposes of public hearing.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Ms. Fowler, sixteen twenty-one, sixteen twenty-two, please.
Sixteen twenty-one, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as sixteen nineteen and sixteen twenty-three Franklin Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six one three, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year real property tax abatement for South Bend Form Tool Co. Sixteen twenty-two, a resolution of the common council of the city of South Bend, designating certain areas within the city of South Bend, Indiana, commonly known as sixteen nineteen and sixteen twenty-three Franklin Street, South Bend, Indiana, four six six, as an economic revitalization area for purposes of a five-year personal property tax abatement for South Bend Form Tool Co. Inc.
Thank you, presenter.
Sorry, committee report. Community Investments sends both forward favorably.
Now, presenter.
Excellent. Sarah Heinzman with offices on the fourteenth floor of this building. South Bend Form is a local company, they've been here since nineteen fifty-three. They are requesting a five-year personal and a five-year real property abatement. This is going to allow them to make two hundred and twenty thousand dollars worth of real estate improvements so that they can increase their footprint, as well as six hundred and twenty-three dollars in new equipment as well to increase their line. Total taxes generated by this project are going to be just over ninety-one thousand, total abated are going to be just over thirty-six, and total taxes paid over fifty-four. Seventeen jobs are going to be retained with an average payroll of seventy-eight thousand, or seven hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, there we go, as well as creating eight new full-time jobs at twenty dollars an hour. And we have this one, Kyle Hasker, and he's going to talk a little bit about the petition.
Thank you. Petitioner, if you would, name and address and give us a brief statement.
Good evening. My name is Kyle Harbison. I'm with South Bend Form Tool at four zero eight West Indiana Avenue. This project is an expansion of our current building, which will allow for additional machining equipment and warehousing space for new business that we plan to acquire. And it will allow us to add jobs for our current day shift and open up for a second shift.
Okay, thank you. Council, any questions? Nope. We'll open up to the public. Anyone from the public wishing to speak in favor of sixteen twenty-one, sixteen twenty-two, please come to the podium. Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak against sixteen twenty-one, sixteen twenty-two, please come to the podium. Again, seeing none, we'll turn it back to council.
Motion for the adoption of sixteen twenty-one.
Second.
Ms. Fowler.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Thank you.
Kathy, do we need a motion to adopt sixteen twenty-two?
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sixteen, oh, I'm sorry, I'm on twenty-three. Sorry, folks.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Vorty.
Aye.
Mr. Furlet.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Councilmember Preston.
Aye.
Randy Kelly.
Aye.
President Tim Scott.
Aye.
Eight ayes.
Motion to continue sixteen twenty-three to April eleven.
Second.
All in favor?
I'm sorry.
All in favor? Is that correct? Is that correct? Is that correct? Is that correct? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. First readings, zero seven sixteen, please.
Zero seven sixteen, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending chapter one of the South Bend Municipal Code by inclusion of a new section, one dash five point one, entitled City Flag.
Motion to send a community relations for four eleven.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Thank you. Eleven sixteen, please.
Eleven sixteen, first reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, amending chapter fourteen of the South Bend Municipal Code by establishing new article thirteen entitled Smoke-Free Air Regulations for Workplaces and Public Places.
Motion to. Hold on, no. Never recognize Gavin. We recognize Gavin.
No, that's...
Fine. I heard him first, Oliver. Seriously.
I'm sure you did. You may have thrown smoke after you.
Gavin, you have a floor. Okay. Motion to send 1116 to help in public safety for 329.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
Can I have a roll call, please?
So, council member, I'm starting with...
Start with the second district. It's fine.
Okay.
Just a roll call and a motion.
All right. Starting with Regina. Sorry. Nay. You're good. All right. Randy Kelly.
Aye.
Councilmember Broden.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Three nays and five ayes.
Okay, thank you. 1216, please.
1216. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending Chapter 6 of the South Bend Municipal Code by the inclusion of new Article 10, Landlord Registration Program.
Motion to move this bill to April 4th. That'd be the 11th.
April 11th.
That'd be April 11th.
And we refer to the...
That'd be the...
That'd be the... Council Public Safety Committee. So, there was a motion and a second to move this to 411.
To 411?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Roll call vote?
Nope. Just one thing. 1316.
1316. First reading on an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 424, 426, and 430, Cushion Street, and 726, and 736, Lincoln Way. Council managed District 1 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Motion to send the area plan and set forth second and third reading of 425. And also the zoning administration.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1416.
1416. First reading on an ordinance to vacate the following described alley. The alley to be vacated is the first north-south alley west of Cushion Street from Lincoln Way West to the first east-west alley for a distance of 193 feet and a width of 14 feet. Said alley being a part of Heizelman Edition and Koontzman Edition, city of South Bend, Portage Township, St. Joseph County, Indiana.
Motion to send the public works and property vacation for 411.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1516, please.
1516. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and enterprise operations in 2016 of $926,497 from the solidated building fund, 600, and $480,000 from EMS Capital Fund, number 287, $25,000 from EMS Operating Fund, number 288, and $2,500 from the 2015 Sewer Bond Insurance Fund, 666, $188,621 from Century Center Capital Fund, number 671, and $63,000 from the Water Works and O.M. Fund, number 620, and $360,294 from the Sewage O.M. Fund, number 641.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for 411.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1616, please.
1616. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for their budget transfers in various departments within the city of South Bend, Indiana, for year 2016.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for 411.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. 1716.
1716. First reading on an ordinance of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, appropriating additional funds for certain departmental and city service operations in 2016 of $25,000 from the General Fund, 101, and $587,022 from DCI State Grant Fund, Fund Number 210, and $926,497 from the Unsafe Building Fund, Number 219, $17,500 from the Central Services Fund, Number 220, $22,000 from Kovaletsky Non-Reverting Capital Fund, 401, and $29,300 from the County Option Tax Fund, 404.
Motion to send the personnel and finance for 411.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Unfinished business. Motion to strike 6094, 6194, 9194, and 10494.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. New business. Is there any new business? Seeing none. Any... Privilege of the floor. Privilege of the floor. This is where individuals who wish to address the council must state their name and residential address. Individuals are limited to three minutes only. The maximum time limit for this portion is 30 minutes long. Individuals may address only issues which the city has jurisdiction. Individuals shall not be permitted to address any topic for which the council has heard previously on their agenda. As council president, I may assign the topic of the race by individuals during the privilege of the floor to the appropriate council member and/or request city clerk to contact a member of the city administration to review the comment. All topics assigned shall be postponed to regular scheduled council meeting. At this time, I will ask Gavin Furley to keep time. He'll give you three minutes. He'll give you an exit warning at 30 seconds. Sir, go ahead. Name and address.
My name is Samuel Brown. I stay at 222 East Navarre Street in the city of South Bend. I would like to inform the council, who's working in joint connection with the city mayor's office on the street renaming committee, my name is King Bubbaire. And just like you said, we are moving along with your input from the public. We still have about three to four more meetings before we can give you a complete analysis on how that went. We are achieving better, and I feel it's our only right since the council got a station in us and the mayor's office got a station in us to try to keep you up to date the best we can. We still have a long way to go, and hopefully through the blessing of God, we will get these done. The next thing I'd like to bless the council on, and I know I only got two minutes, we kind of run out of time, because we had a dangerous situation at 1408 Elwood Avenue. And back last year, and I think it was the month of October or November, I was able to sit in on a meeting about that old jewelry plant, along with code enforcement and our president, Mr. Scott. And the gentleman owned the properties from Arizona. He came in with his lawyer, and he was given certain regulations and certain things he would have to do at that property to make it safe for the city. He wanted $250,000 from the city of South Bend to help him with his property. He was turned down, but the city of South Bend gave him orders to make that safe so the public wouldn't be in danger back there. I took a bunch of pictures. I'm going to forward them to Mr. Scott, since this is in his district. The guy has not complied. He said he was going to get a property manager to work with the city. He's haven't done that. And I am asking the council to talk to Mr. Randy Wilkerson, the director of code enforcement. I've been up here enough times, and I track these every day. The guy is not going to do nothing, and the city of South Bend has to make this safe for the city of South Bend. We have to take this bar.
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. But I'm going to keep on this party, and we can check on it until this is made safe for the city of South Bend. We're not going to let this guy just come in and do what he want to do to this safe. Thank you for listening, gentlemen.
Thank you. Name and address, please.
Sheriff Bidetke, 3822 Ford Street. I don't know how much communication the council has with the Board of Public Safety, but on January 29th, there was a police chase with property damage involved. It ended in my front yard.
Yes, it did.
Lucky me, the car had no insurance, so I had to chase after the city to try and get it fixed. But in the meantime, I get this wonderful letter from code telling me that since my fence fell down, I have 30 days to fix said fence that fell down. Well, you know what? The fence didn't fall down, and it's going to take more than 30 days for this lawsuit to be settled. I just want it on public record. I'm not dealing with code enforcement, and it won't be fixed in 30 days, and I will not be held responsible for fines. When I went to bed that night, I had a fence. When I woke up the next morning, I had no fence. If I had not called the police to see if there was a report filed, I'd have never even known there had been a police chase that ended in my front yard because there was no cars left, no hang tag. Granted, the officer tried to knock on the door, but once I go to bed, I'm down for the count. And he figured if I didn't wake up with the crashing, he wasn't going to wake me up.
Email me all that, please.
So, just so you know.
I know.
It's in litigation, and I'm not worried about it, but I want it on record. Thank you.
Stick around after, sir. Thank you.
Jason Bidetke, Crystal, 3822 S. Ford Street. Just going to try and touch on a couple of things real quick. Glad to see that the L-Vel Golf Course is open. Glad to see the city will be running it this year. One of the things, though, that does trouble me a little that I do see in the news is the rush to raise the rates. This is one of those things you got to think about for a minute. Golf is kind of a fixed expense operation, so when you open up in the morning, your expenses are already kind of what they're going to be for the day, whether you have 200 people through or 300 people through. So, instead of rushing to raise the rates to $2 or $3, potentially lowering the number of rounds played each day and averaged throughout the year, maybe the potential is to look at lowering our rates down a little bit to make us more competitive with courses like Whispering Pines and Plymouth Rock and things like that, that could potentially raise the number of rounds played and actually raise the amount of revenue out of L-Vel this upcoming season, such as kind of turning into a very critical season for us out there at that course in terms of what the future of the course may hold. So, I think it's time to kind of step back before we raise the rates and say, what is the potential for lowering them actually going to do to potentially raise the overall revenue out of the course? Then the second thing I kind of want to touch base on real quick is seeing that the road funding bill was passed out of the state this year. Very nervous about that in terms of the long-term implications of two potential provisions out of there. One that would allow the county to double our current wheel tax for $25.50 per vehicle, and then one that would allow the city to implement the $25.00 wheel tax, thus potentially raising our wheel tax from $25.00 to $75.00 per vehicle here in the city of South Bend. We're already taxed enough, feed enough, working-class citizens that are not making enough money right now to make ends meet. So, before we go rushing into the need for more dollars, let's pause and say, we've got to find alternate ways to make ends meet. We can't continue to tax the working class to the breaking point, because a lot of people are already there. You know, again, in my neighborhood, average household income is $19,000. $50.00 per vehicle in that neighborhood would absolutely destroy budgets. That may not seem like a lot to a lot of us, but that's a lot to a lot of people in this city. So, just take a minute and think about it before we rush to add more taxes to the docket.
Thank you. Next name and address, please.
Gary King, 730 North Hill Street, South Bend. I wanted to talk about the flag, but I think that's on your agenda and has been moved to April 11th. I am unable to be here on that date. If there's anyone who's able to speak with me about that separately, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next name and address, please.
Hello, Keith DeShrock, 750 Islandview Lane. That's in Mishawaka. We own several properties along the Miami Village area, oddly enough, on Cofax. Thank you for your hard work there. We pointed out to even city residents in South Bend that we had a vice president here and they're illiterate of history. I come to you now as asking for respect and recognition for bringing a quarter million to half a million dollars into the city of South Bend with the Expo for Women on March 3rd. We sent an email to council at large here seated before us now, and we thank you for your leadership and your attention right now. So, again, quarter million to half a million dollars, those numbers are estimated.